Thank you. Mr. Armstrong, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
House.
Here.
Self.
White.
Here.
Williams. And Mayor Schneider.
Here. I don't see any speaker slips for any items not on the agenda, so we'll close public comment. And just note that Mr. Hotchkiss just came in, and Chief Dimizio, or whoever's taking it, you're on. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, good evening. Chief Andrew Dimizio here to present the proposed fiscal year 2011 budget for the Fire Department. This past year has been challenging for our department, but in response to those challenges, we've found new strength and we've built a strong team. As a new chief, I'm extremely fortunate and thankful for this team. Beginning with the firefighters, some who are here today, and the inspectors who are on the front line, dealing with the public and providing the exceptional levels of service that we provide, to some of our command staff, who provide direction and oversight to our operations, and to our administrative staff, who keep the wheels rolling and the bills paid. We all work extremely well together to support our mission. Now, our mission as a fire department sounds basic, it's almost simple, but it really has grown a lot more complex over the years as we have taken on many different roles to accomplish it. We dedicate all our efforts to provide for safety and welfare of the public through preservation of life, property, and the environment. The City of Santa Barbara has an exceptional fire department, and it's a fire department that is here for and because of this remarkable community. Before I begin our presentation, I want to thank our community for their faith and support of the fire department, and to let the public know that we'll always work hard to deserve this confidence through our attitude, conduct, and accomplishments. Before I begin, on behalf of the men and women of Santa Barbara City Fire Department, I'd like to express our condolences to the McGrew and Cordero family for the loss of their son. Godspeed, Michael T. I'd like to introduce some of the staff that are here with me tonight. Administrative Services, Ron Leckey is here. Operations Division Chief Dean Silves, and Prevention Division Chief Joe Porey, you might also know Joe as our Fire Marshal. So, we get the overview slide, please, Ron. This is just a brief run-through of what we'll be showing you tonight. We'll be providing a department overview, then we'll go into the different funds, Wildland Benefit Assessment Fund, the general fund budget. We'll be covering some of the budget reduction options that we're proposing, and covering major program issues and some of the highlights of our P3 for the year. Basic department overview, what we wanted to do this year was kind of cover a little bit who we are and what we do, more in-depth. That was a picture, by the way, of a firefighter at the county courthouse clock that you might have recognized. Fire Department has 109 employees. Staff is comprised of nine managers, and you can see that's a pretty lean staff for 100 people. 94 fire bargaining units and six general employees. The programs that we have in our department are listed below. You see Administration, Operations, Prevention, Wildland, Office of Emergency Services and Public Education, and Airport Rescue and Firefighting. Those are the things that we provide. Here's a slide that shows our authorized positions, and if you look at that, you'll notice the drop, 2003 to 2004, from 124 to 113. That looks pretty steep there, but the reason for that, that is when we decided to go away from hiring a lot of extra relief positions. So that was a decision that was made in an effort to control costs, because, and we'll talk about this more later, it's actually cheaper for us to run a flat staffing model and not have extra firefighters because of the benefits that are associated with those positions. So you can see now it trended down to 109 for fiscal year 2011. Here's an overview of the programs. You can see where the positions are at. When I came in as a fire chief, I did a little rebalancing of our fire department. I created two divisions instead of a deputy chief model, so we have fire prevention and operations underneath the administrative. And you can see that the bulk of the positions are in operations, and that's as it should be, because those are the people that are providing the services. Those are the firefighters, the boots on the ground, we call them. On the left-hand side is the fire prevention. You can see it's pretty streamlined, especially when you start looking at our wildland fire suppression. That's one person provided out of that Benefit Assessment District. And Emergency Services and Public Education, that's one person there, due to the loss of the Public Education Coordinator last year. This shows a little bit more in-depth, our organizational chart. Once again, beginning on the right side, excuse me, you can see how it's broken out. I now have Emergency Services reporting to the Prevention Division Chief. I did that because she was kind of a standalone employee, and I wanted to provide somewhat of a team for her to work with. And I think that's been an effective, this has been an effective model. Some of the inspectors are able to assist her in some of her duties. So it goes down through, and you can see we have a Wildland Inspector Two and a Fire Services Specialist. That Fire Service Specialist is, that's the funding that's provided for the Benefit Assessment District. And the Wildland Inspector Two is actually through general fund costs. Going over onto the right-hand side, the Operations Division, you can see it's broken down pretty quickly. Below the Operations Division Chief, into the three battalions that we have to provide 24/7, 365-day coverage for the citizens of Santa Barbara. There's one battalion chief who provides shift coverage along with all our eight stations, and each station has three firefighters except for Station One, and there's a truck crew, a rescue crew there. I'll let Operations Division Chief talk a little bit more about that. Now, if you look at the cross-task positions, those are positions that are scheduled for elimination in this budget, so we wanted to kind of identify those. And you see an Office Specialist Two position, we'll talk a little bit more about that, and the Training Captain, that are on our budget for proposed elimination this year, for budget reduction purposes. Now I'd like to hand the microphone.
Madam Mayor, could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Those reduced positions, are they vacant positions right now?
They are currently vacant positions.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to turn the microphone now over to Operations Division Chief Silves, and he'll talk a little bit about our Operations Division and describe our coverage model.
Thank you, Chief, Madam Mayor, council members. What we'd like to do is start with just an overview of our department. We're going to kind of touch briefly on each station and tell you the staffing, and kind of what their specialties are, and what some of the things they face in their districts. We'll start with Station One. Station One, you're all familiar with it, serves our downtown core. It is our largest station personnel-wise, it's staffed with a battalion chief, a three-person engine company, and a four-person truck company. It does protect the highest population density in the city and a major portion of our transportation corridor. Crews at this station train regularly on specialized areas like high-rise tactics, urban search and rescue, auto extrication, and aerial operations, just to name a few. Station One is also our staffing station. The lead captains there provide and make sure that there's enough staffing to cover every station in the city 24 hours a day, 365 days a week. The station also staffs our new EOC, which most of you have seen, and a state-of-the-art training facility and classroom that's being used regularly by several members and departments in the city. Station Two serves the Lower East Side. It is staffed with a three-person engine company. This station is one of the busiest in the city and also contains our hazmat team. So crews impacted, crews are impacted hereby also a large section of the transportation corridor, which keeps them very busy. And crews at this station spend a lot of their time on hazardous materials training and familiarizing themselves with the equipment that they have. Station Three, it's the center of the city and includes the Lower Riviera, the Mission, and high-density sections of downtown. This is also staffed with a three-person engine company. The geographic location of this station is crucial, and it means that it will almost always be the second-in engine on large incidents. So it's, its location is very crucial for that. Many members of this station are also trained in aircraft rescue and firefighting, and serve as relief crews for our crews at Station Eight, so they can come in and do training. Station Four serves our North Side. It is also staffed with a three-person engine company. The station is also one of the busiest stations in the city, a bulk of their calls being for emergency medical response. And they also frequently respond to Santa Barbara County, two calls that border their district, so they're very busy with mutual aid, not automatic aid. Station Five covers Las Pecitas, Hidden Valley areas, and a large portion of the transportation corridor as well. It's staffed with a three-person engine company, and it's responsible, one of their major responsibilities is performing maintenance and upkeep on one of our most important pieces of safety equipment, and that is our self-contained breathing apparatus. They also have a special response unit that's there that would respond on mass casualty incidents, and is capable of treating up to 25 injured people. Station Six serves our Mesa and Harbor areas. It's staffed with a three-person engine company. Crews here must regularly respond with harbor patrol and waterfront staff on calls in that area. They also train with the city departments as well as the Coast Guard, and they need to be proficient in rope rescue due to the cliffs and some of the other areas that they have in their district. Station Seven is the Upper Riviera and Los Canoas areas, also a three-person engine company. Though handling lower call volume than other stations in the city, the potential for high life and property loss are severe, as we've seen in our recent fires. This station is also staffed with a specialized four-wheel-drive wildland firefighting apparatus, so crews consequently train regularly on the specialized apparatus and wildland tactics. They regularly respond with crews from Santa Barbara County, Montecito, and the Forest Services at their district abuts, all of those areas. Station Eight serves the Santa Barbara Airport, staffed with a three-person engine company, and obviously bulk of their training is directed towards meeting FAA requirements and familiarity with aircraft and the airport area. The crews must maintain currency in all of the other training areas that go along with being firefighters, as well as ARF training, and they also do inspections on fueling facilities at the airport. From these eight stations, our department provides emergency response in the following areas: emergency medical services, structural and wildland fire suppression, urban search and rescue, water rescue, vehicle extrication, hazardous materials, aircraft rescue, and firefighting. When not responding to these emergencies, the crews also provide the following services: public education, business inspections, weekly apparatus equipment maintenance, annual hose and pump testing, and lots of training, which, as maybe some of you may or may not be aware, we do have a regional training facility, that is our Training Tower. This serves the Santa Barbara Fire Department, other local law enforcement and fire agencies, and other city departments. It houses, as you see, a four-story concrete tower, a classroom, and props for rope rescue, hazmat, auto extrication, and ventilation, so this property gets quite a bit of use. Next slide. We've talked a lot about constant staffing, now that you kind of had a better idea of what the staffing model is at each station, we can talk about a constant staffing model, which means, what does it take to staff all of our stations every single day? Station One has a battalion chief. This battalion chief is in charge of the entire shift, or all eight stations for that particular shift. We have three-person engine crews, we have those, you notice I repeated that one over and over, that's the bulk of our department. We have seven stations with three persons for 21 people. We have three people at the ARF station, and then we also, as the chief mentioned, a four-person squad/truck/rescue crew for four people. So, to staff all the stations, we need 29 people every single day. Just real quick on that, you don't have to go back. Basically, what that means is in the event that one of those regularly scheduled people is sick, has a vacation, or whatever, is gone for whatever reason, we would then have to hire an overtime to fill that, to get back up to that 29, so. Okay, workload indicator, what we have here is just kind of a running total on the past several years of total call volume. As you can see, it just continues to pretty much trend upward in the number of calls that we're responding to. But as you could also see in an earlier slide, that our staffing model has gotten flatter and more lean, so to speak. But we continue to respond to more calls without an impact on the services provided, so I listed off all of the things that we're doing. We're still providing all of those services. One of the areas not shown in this is the impact of training. Our Training Department, our Training Officers, are responsible for ensuring that our personnel receive annual training in 24 different mandated categories as required by the California Code of Regulations, Health and Safety Codes, Department of Motor Vehicles, and federal mandates as well. Next slide. This is a workload indicator by station, just to kind of give you a distribution of what some of the stations. You'll note that Station One has the largest call volume, primarily due to its central location and its multiple apparatus. Stations Two, Four, and Five are next, with similar call loads, and stay very busy with a variety of calls in their districts. Stations Three and Six drop off somewhat due in part to their location and the areas that they serve. What is not reflected is the importance of these stations being the second-in on many incidences, and I talked about that with Station Three. Lastly, you'll notice that Stations Eight, Seven, and Eight are well behind in the call load. I would like to say that this is a good thing, because basically, these are the high-risk, low-frequency stations. Basically, they don't get a lot of calls, but when they do get one, it's generally catastrophic, so we like to see those numbers lower there, especially at the airport. But this, like I said, the fact that the importance of these apparatus getting in a timely response to the rare but catastrophic incidents kind of justify their existence, so it's very important for that. Of those over 7,000 calls, this is generally fairly consistent throughout all of the years, but you'll note that the majority of our calls are of the medical emergency type. All of our members are emergency medical technicians and receive EMT, quarterly EMT refresher training to stay current. The 3% for fire calls, while small, also represent the largest life and property loss potential, and it's for this reason that a large part of our training is spent preparing for these types of incidents. The last section encompasses all of the other types of calls that we respond to: rescues, hazardous materials incidents, mutual aid responses, just basically everything else thrown in there. This last slide that I'll be discussing is, a slide represents our response times to incidents, is based on the time from when the station receives the call to the time they arrive on scene. This five-minute response time also includes time for crews to get their gear on, and then the response time on top of that. If you'll note, the first category, the NFPA standard, it states that they would like, their standard is to reach the incident in under five minutes 90 percent of the time. Now if you look at the next bar over, we'll notice the Santa Barbara City, we've achieved that 88 percent of the time, so we're just slightly below the NFPA standard. This is obviously due in large part to the strategic location of our fire stations, allowing our crews to get to the scene in a timely manner when they need to. We've also thrown up some other local jurisdictions of similar size to show you their response times as compared to the NFPA standard. Oxnard, Santa Maria, and Ventura City are all well below that, so we take a lot of pride in our response times, in our ability to get the proper equipment and personnel to the scene. We take great pride in this statistic and attribute this high level of achievement to the strategic placement and the professionalism and readiness of our crews, and we continue to monitor this important statistic and strive to improve on it every year.
Thank you very much, Chief Silves. You described very well the response phase of what we do as a fire department, and I'd like to have Fire Marshal Joe Porey talk a little bit about his, what the Fire Prevention Bureau provides.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the Fire Prevention Bureau is often thought of as the enforcement arm of the fire department. Of course, we do a lot more than that. We have seven general fire inspectors and a wildland specialist, and we also run the Office of Emergency Services. We're responsible for complex investigations, complex inspections, and enforcement of all type. In this particular slide, you're looking at one of the members of the Fire Prevention Bureau at the ceiling of a granada, you probably recognize it, inspecting the retrofitted sprinkler system in that building as it was being renovated. Among the areas that we get into, the land development team is part of the development process, and we are part of that team. We are involved in very early stages, the planning and pre-concept construction, and we participate in plan review, do inspections of construction projects as they go up, and follow-up on those inspections. And also, we inspect fire protection systems like alarms and sprinkler systems. We also do Title 19 inspections that are required by the state. The Title 19 inspections include things like hospitals, jails, elderly care facilities, daycares, those types of things. We conduct fire investigations. Fire investigations are among the most complex type of investigations. They require many hours, depending on how complex the fire itself is, and we follow them through from cause and origin stage all the way through to follow-up, and that pursues both the criminal and the civil ends of fire investigation. We also investigate hazardous materials occupancies as part of the local COOPA, which is the local county regional hazardous materials occupancies organization, and inspect those under state guidelines as well. In code enforcement, that's the bulk of our inspection activity. Code enforcement ranges from complaints by citizens to situations encountered in the field by fire employees, engine company referrals, referrals from other city agencies and other city divisions, and wildland enforcement cases, particularly the defensible space variety. This slide just illustrates a variety of duties that we're involved in. There are many different aspects of fire prevention in addition to the things that I've mentioned. For instance, we conduct training classes for engine companies, training classes for other city employees, field support of engine companies, public education, public relations, and CERT classes, research code adoption, which will be going into that cycle fairly soon, overhead wildland assignments, and other community development duties. The Office of Emergency Services falls under fire prevention, as we were saying earlier. In the Office of Emergency Services, which is run by Yolanda McGlinchey, we develop safety programs, train city employees. All city employees are disaster workers, as you know, and it's Yolanda's job to make sure that everyone is up on their disaster responsibilities. And as she runs and organizes the EOC, which is the Emergency Operations Center, and conducts the CERT classes for us. And we were here the other day asking for renewal of the Wildland Fire Suppression Benefit Assessment District. We also have an employee dedicated to that district, recently renewed by this council for 2011, and that is, of course, the three-pronged defensible space, road clearance, and vegetation
Thank you, Division Chief Porey, for your overview of the Prevention Bureau. Now I'd like to introduce Administrative Services Manager Ron Leckey to walk you through our fire department budget. Ron's one of our newer fire department employees. He's hit the ground running this year with all the budget issues, so, Ron.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'll take you through the numbers, the budget for fiscal year 11. To begin with, we have a $21.5 million proposed budget for the year, consisting of two funds, our general fund and then this wildland fire assessment fund that Joe just mentioned. Move on, we'll first talk briefly about the Benefit Assessment Fund. As was mentioned earlier, it primarily funds one full-time equivalent or a person to oversee that operation. It also uses most of its cost for the special projects, which is the road clearance and contractors to do the shipping and mulching. There's some allocated costs, some materials, and some small equipment purchases budgeted for this year. This slide shows the recent trend of the history of this fund, and you can see it's almost identical this year to last year. Point out to you that there is a change between the line items, salaries and benefits. You see a 9.4 percent increase. That merely reflects that last year's amended budget had the benefit of a furlough as part of the salaries and benefits. This year's, that hasn't been adopted yet, so we have it at full cost with the annual increase for that person. Allocated costs went down slightly due to lower information systems department allocated Revenues, pretty much the same story. We're assessing the exact same amount this year as we had last year, so that's what we're budgeting for, for the revenues. And that's about it for the Wildland Assessment Fund. Now we'll go into the general fund. And we'll begin by just looking at, by division, where are we budgeting our monies? And the general fund, as was presented earlier, is broken into a number of divisions, and you can see the large piece of the pie graph is essentially the operations suppression, that's where 80 percent of our costs go. But if you combine that with also the airport rescue and firefighting, which is, you know, Station Number Eight, comprises 88 percent of our costs. And then prevention, another 6 percent, administration 4 percent, as you can see, public ed, and wildland fire mitigation, another couple of percent. And then this slide shows the large portion, this is by major object or by type of cost, and you can see that almost 90 percent, 89 percent of our costs are salary and benefit related. We also have to, are charged with $1.6 million of allocated costs from the other departments for their use of their computers, vehicle maintenance, building maintenance, that type of thing. Then we have a portion of our fund for supplies and services, and then round it out with some equipment purchases that we need during the year. And this gives you the budget trend information for the appropriations for the general fund. One thing to look at that I would like you to take note of is, this percentage change comparison is comparing fiscal year amended 2010 to the proposed fiscal year 11. You can see that it goes down slightly by .7 percent. And you can then draw you to the top of the first row, salaries and benefits. We have a salaries and benefits, and you can see that's actually increasing from last year to this year 4.5 percent before any kind of, you know, further adjustments are made. Well, I took, what I split out, though, was to show you that the whole fund went down, but salaries and benefits, our largest cost, actually goes up. And one, the major reason why it goes down is that second line there, you can see mutual aid overtime. That's when our firefighters are called out to outside jurisdictions to provide mutual aid, to provide firefighting. And we don't know what's going to, we budget for that, but we don't know precisely, you know, what's going to be called, how many fires are going to be happening, how many firemen are being called out, and how many trucks will be rolling out to those districts. But that overtime, in the actual year, fiscal year 09, we actually incurred $1.1 million worth of overtime charges, so for the last year, for the current year we're in, fiscal year 2010, we budgeted for $1.5 million. But now you see, for 11, we're bringing it, scaling that way back down to $700,000. And the reason is, is because in fiscal year 10, we're seeing that mutual aid occurrences are way down. We're not being called out as many fires and incidents, and we're also, they've changed some business practices on calling out departments, so we have to, we're scaling that back. Well, as you'll see later, we also, we receive revenues, when we send out firefighters, we receive mutual aid revenue. As this mutual aid overtime goes down, so do our revenues. Supplies and services, that's also something to note, it's a 27 percent decrease. That's primarily because in fiscal year 10, we budgeted for the cost of the lease for the administration office buildings at 925 Dale Arena, and we're not having to budget for those this year, so that's about $240,000, $50,000 a year. This is a graphic representation just of the same information you saw in total budget, as you can see, just to show, you know, the budget has, it's decreasing slightly from last year to this year. Now we'll go into, talking about our revenues, the fire department's not one of these enterprise funds where we're generating our own revenues, but we do have some revenues. A large portion, you see there, is ARF, which is the Airport Rescue and Firefighting, and that's basically revenues derived from the airport. They reimburse the fire department for the cost of They reimburse the Fire Department for the cost of Fire Station Number Eight at the airport. And then you can see the mutual aid revenues, $1.2 million. Last year, we had budgeted, you'll see, you know, over $2 million for this. We've pretty much, almost cut it in half, took 40% off. So we're scaling back our mutual aid revenues. And then it rounds it out with AMR, A-M-R, Fire Reimbursement. That's American Medical Response. It's an ambulance company in town. Fire inspection fees, and we'll go over these other components on this next slide, which shows you the revenue trending. And at the top of the list, you can see the ARF reimbursement from the airport, scheduled increase of 5%. Mutual aid, this is, we can see that we've decreased that revenue item. Not much change for the medical fire response. Fire inspection fees is down a bit. We're trending in this fiscal year, actual numbers, to be about $140,000, so we're just, we're taking that information and budgeting more realistically for this year. Prop 172 is, you know, percent sales tax. That has to do with our economy, you know, with the less, you know, sales transactions. We're not seeing an increase there, we're seeing a decrease. And then LDT fees, that's land development team fees, and we get a portion of those fees that community development takes in for our work on the land development team. And then cost recovery is this new item that we're going to be speaking to later with, for revenues. And that pretty much rounds out just the numbers aspect of this presentation. And now I give it back to Chief Dimizio.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, now I'll cover the budget reduction measures, and I call this section "The Challenge," because it has been a challenge this year to come up with enough budget reduction measures and suitable ones. If you go to the next slide, when we were considering, when fire staff was considering budget reduction measures, we came up with a strategy where we really wanted to maintain the existing emergency response capability to the highest level possible. As you can see from Chief Sylvie's presentation, we do have exceptional service in this city. And the public expects that level of service, so we want to maintain that. The second objective, minimize service level impacts for non-emergency activity, is actually more difficult for us to achieve now that we're such a lean Fire Department. Certain components, public education, we have had to come up with alternative methods, use of volunteers, and our numbers have suffered somewhat. But we're making a strong effort in that area also. You can see when we came up with, well, to back up, everybody's aware of this, but in an effort to come up with, to deal with the proposed deficit of about $8.9 million, our city administrator asked, the department has to come up with savings between 10% and 12% of our budget for public safety. It was a 10% target that we were shooting for. You can see on this slide that we have come up with $655,758 for, to be included in our recommended budget. And we were also able to identify another $900,000, $908,000 that are included in the other options list. And this, of course, is a part for our recommended budget, and this amount is part of the citywide $6.3 million recommended department cuts. And of course, that leaves that critical $2.6 million cuts, and we're working very closely with our labor group to try and narrow that $2.6 million down even further. Here's an overview of the recommended adjustments to our budget. We recommended revenue from a cost recovery for Fire Department response, and I'll talk about this more in depth in just a minute, for $100,000. Utilizing RDA funding to lease our office at 925 De La Vena Street while we're building our new administrative offices on Tripoli Street, $240,000. Reduce custodial service for our Fire Administration Offices, $40,000. Eliminate vacant office specialist position, and once again, these are vacant positions. Eliminate two vacant fire captain positions, and these were two of the relief positions that we are attritioning down to go to that flat staffing model. And lastly, for $50,000 credit. And lastly, eliminate the vacant training captain position for $163,784, totaling The first one I'd like to talk about is the cost recovery for Fire Department response. This is an additional revenue. I presented it to the Finance Committee. We were hoping, we are hoping to use a third-party system to bill at-fault people who are involved in accidents involving spills, advanced rescues, pipeline breaks, hazmat spills, who are non-residents. However, just in the last week, we've encountered some implementation issues with this entire program. As a fire chief, I don't want to pull the trigger on anything that I'm not entirely comfortable with, and also that I can't implement right on target for the beginning of this fiscal year. And if I can't get that $100,000, if I'm not sure I'm going to get $100,000, then I don't want to budget that $100,000 on it. But I do, I'm very interested in cost recovery, especially for our hazardous materials response. We have, as Chief Sylvie says, we have a hazardous materials response team at Station Two, specialized training, they have a lot of equipment, and it's, quite frankly, an expensive thing to have, but it is an excellent resource, and it's a regional resource. That resource costs the Fire Department approximately $80,000 annually to maintain. So I really want to maintain that level-
How much does it cost?
Approximately $80,000, and that includes pro-pay for the firefighters there, training, equipment, backfill when they need to do specialized training. So it's about $80,000 annually. So I want to maintain that high level of service at all costs, and so I'm still trying to target getting cost recovery for hazardous materials. But I'm focusing the recovery aspect of it, specific to hazardous materials, not expanding it out to traffic accidents and whatnot. And I'm also interested in doing it billing in-house.
Mr. Williams has a question.
How many cities are doing this elsewhere in the state?
Councilmember Williams, I think there's about 47 cities that are using at least this one billing service company that we were looking at utilizing.
Hey. I don't want you to drop this. I mean, frankly, $100,000 in a general fund department. I mean, I know Steve likes to play a conservative, but if there's 50 other cities in, you know, or more in the state that are doing this, then our chance of being, let's just say, if our chance of being attacked for it is 1 in 50 versus $100,000 worth of revenue, I'm willing to take that chance. And I think that's a policy decision, and I think we should talk about it.
Madam Mayor.
Devinson.
Yes, our office has real concerns about the recovery fees, and I would not characterize the risk of litigation as 1 in 50. The cities that have adopted this are nowhere near the size of Santa Barbara or in its profile within the state. And so it, just because there may be other cities, they are not of the same size as Santa Barbara, and so that, it's just not a percentage game. It's not, it's not that there are parties out there who are just kind of saying, okay, I'm going to wait till a particular city adopts this. It really is going to depend on how many cases, how many accidents you have and those kinds of things. The city of Santa Barbara is larger than some other cities. That's what affects the chances of this, of having it. But in the same way, I mean, I, you know, the best example I can give is a couple of years ago, there were several cities that were adopting 911 access fees, and that didn't go very well either, so.
Well, you know, look, I understand that you guys have problems with it, and I, sometimes I completely agree with your very conservative approach to doing that. But these are very tough times, and we have jurisdictions right next to us that are getting revenue that we're not, that we're leaving on the table. And I think this is a policy-level discussion. I don't think that the decision should be made by, for council, by y'all on this. I think we should look at what cities are doing this, and if it's costing us $80,000 a year to do this, and there is other cities that are getting cost recovery on that, I would like to be able to take a look at that closer.
And here's our plan, because we're not throwing this out. What we're saying is, the city attorney's office raised the concern the last week, especially related to the non-hazmat recovery, where, because part of this is, they're saying, when you go on a traffic accident, you charge the people on a traffic accident. So our strategy is, is continue to do the analysis, come back to you on it for the policy discussion, and Chief Dimizio and I have talked, and he just recently, in the last week, has become aware that one of his fire inspectors is going to retire, and he's agreed, and we've agreed, let's hold that position vacant at this point. They believe they can get by, and then we'll come to you, and we can get that analysis done, and then you can, you can make the policy decision. We'll tell you the pros and the cons on this, this charge, and do it in more, not in a, you know, so we basically, this is not going to create a problem for us the next two or three months until we get our act together. And both Chief Dimizio and I think that, that works at least for now, and we'll come back.
That's good. And I'm not asking for us to make a conclusion on it today. I just think that we need to have a deeper discussion.
And I'm kind of in the middle road. I think there's probably a good upside on the hazardous material, because we do that not just in our city, we do it for the whole region. We're the South Coast hazmat response. So if it happens in Montecito, if it happens, you know, up, you know, up the coast, these are the guys who respond. And so there's a legitimate basis to say, hey, we should be reimbursed for that. And there's, I believe there's state statute that are specific on point on hazmat. I think, I think the attorney's office is, and we'll come back to you on this, has a pretty good point on your typical traffic accident. And when we looked at what this vendor's doing, they're trying to create a nexus with, with the hazmat recovery even on a traffic accident. And that's, but we'll come back to you with the analysis.
Great.
Thank you. Chief.
And to that end, we've, we've left $10,000 as a placeholder amount for cost recovery in our budget, and we will be working towards that, hopefully to expand on that $10,000. Now if we can go to the next slide. This is the fire inspector position that's being held vacant. Just in the last week or so, got the announcement of an impending retirement from one of our inspectors. So we were able to balance this out and make up the difference between the $100,000 that we were budgeting for cost recovery. Now we'll hold this position vacant and utilize that fund.
Hold it vacant, meaning not eliminate it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. We will utilize the RDA funding to lease, that's our, the RDA funding that we're, we'll utilize the RDA funding to lease our office space at 925 De La Vena. As you know, we're utilizing RDA funds to develop our administrative offices, and we're wrapping the lease of our office space on De La Vena into that project. $40,000 to reduce custodial service. We're using a Public Works custodian right now. We looked at what we could do, and we wanted to make sure that if we went to an outside contractor, that this individual wouldn't lose his job. I confirmed that he will go to hourly. So what we're going to do is go to, while we're still using our administrative office, our leased administrative offices, we'll use an outside contractor and reexamine utilizing Public Works when we move into our permanent administrative office.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Yeah, is that just at Station One, or where is, or is that at your administrative offices?
That's just at our administrative offices.
Okay. And how about in the other stations? The department cleans up itself, correct?
That's correct.
And they cook, and they do everything, so, yeah.
Another budget reduction option is to eliminate our vacant office specialist position. This position's been vacant since about February. You can see some of the impacts that we're kind of seeing, we have been seeing as a result of keeping that position vacant. We haven't had yet to go to automated telephone answering system, but there's been a couple times recently, we had a helicopter drill, and we had problems with our phone systems, and we didn't have a capability of answering the public calls for what's going on. So that creates a lot of rollover back into our dispatch. So that's an impact that we could, we could see with this. We reduced ability to coordinate with other city departments. Also, this person did a lot of scheduling for a lot of our car seat installations and things too. So that's impacts for leaving that, eliminating that vacant office specialist position.
Mr. White.
What kind of installation?
Oh, car seat installation. We actually, we actually have a service where we have technicians who have been trained in the proper installation of car seats. And so new families, new mothers will take their car seats, and the firefighters will take the time to properly install it, show them how to put it in their cars. And it's a wonderful program. The public really loves it. Another is, another budget reduction option is elimination of the two vacant fire captain, which are relief positions once again. As you recall from last year, our strategy was to, was to continue to attrition down our relief positions till we get to a flat staffing model. These positions are currently vacant, and we're proposing to eliminate them. We currently still have three relief engineer positions onboard. This is for the elimination of the training captain position, and this, this actually gives me quite a bit of heartburn as a fire chief for $163,000. The training captain position provides us with a lot of bang for the buck. We've been making, this position's been vacant for some time, but we've been filling it with a captain who's been on modified duty for almost a year. So she's been providing most of the duties of the training captain for us. And as you can see, the training captain really provides a lot of continuity throughout our department. Training is the lifeblood of a Fire Department, and it has to be consistent, and it has, it has to be standardized throughout. A lot of the evolutions that we do, pulling hose, pulling up on a fire ground, they directly relate to our efficiency. And for all those times that we showed you earlier, if somebody does it one way, another person does it another way, we can't have that. So that position really provides that. The way we will probably get around this is by sending out those duties to shift captains. But a lot of times the shift captains will, that will entail overtime, they'll have to get together for meetings. So one of the impacts we see is increased overtime and workload for three shift captains. And when you have to pay those guys for overtime, then you decrease your net savings off that Getting into other options that are not in the proposed budget, as I said earlier, there's a total of $908,556. These are options that were developed, but were not selected to be included in our current proposed budget. Utilize RDA funding for custodial services. This is an incremental, another wrap of the RDA funding, and we decided not to put that in because we're already wrapping in the leased spaces. Reduce information service staffing to half of what we currently are. That's a .4% of a position that we pay for at the IS. We're proposing to reduce that half of what we're currently, savings of $23,000. Another budget option would be to extend the life of our fire engines for 15 to 17 years, $30,000. Eliminate the fire warehouse specialist position, $62,555. Reduce overtime for minimum on-duty first responder staffing, and this is the station brownout option that we'll talk about more in depth here. Going back to the custodial services, I pretty much covered that, $10,000. They would be wrapped, those costs would be wrapped into our leased space. Reduce the information services. This could, the impacts could be delayed implementation of information system projects. And as a Fire Department, we're moving, as most modern Fire Departments, towards more and more dependence on computers and records management systems. So if anything, I would really not like to see this. I'd like to grab our, our own in-house IS person if I could, figure some way to pay for that. The extension of the life of a fire engine for 15 to 17 years. We worked extremely hard to come up with this 15-year replacement program. It has been extremely effective in providing modern fire apparatus, which is safer, has fewer breakdowns for us. fewer breakdowns for us. So, as you can see, it could increase the cost for vehicle maintenance. Because we'd be extending the life, there'd be more breakdowns. And of course, it would delay the replacement of our fire engines and other fleet vehicles.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Chief, how many vehicles do we have now? That are, when a roll can roll on a fire, to a fire?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, I'd have to look that up, and we'll get back to you, you know. I'm not sure offhand what our fleet is at now.
If, okay, so if we do this, then we're delaying replacement by, of, you know, one vehicle every four years? I don't know. I'm going, don't know how we figure this one out here.
You might want to talk also about the reserve apparatus. And we actually, we don't get rid of these vehicles at 15 years, we keep them for another 10.
Okay.
For instance, we're about to take delivery in August of a brand-new ladder truck. It's a very expensive piece of equipment, but it's to replace a 28-year-old reserve ladder truck. So, we have about 11 frontline?
11 engines.
11 engines.
Two trucks.
Two trucks. A heavy rescue squad, a hazmat vehicle, a mass casualty response vehicle.
Thank you.
In really gross terms, it's almost a fire engine a year. And even a base engine's 400, 500 grand, and a ladder truck's about a million now.
The next budget option not scheduled to be implemented is elimination of the fire warehouse specialist position for $62,555. This would transfer the duties to existing administrative staff and firefighter personnel. And this position, fire warehouse specialist, it doesn't really, really ring true to what this individual provides for the fire department. He's a jack-of-all-trades, and in lieu of this position, what we have to do is actually use firefighters, on-duty firefighters, to do a lot of this support logistical work that this individual does. So, he, once again, I keep using this phrase, but bang for the buck. He does so much work for the fire department, and then he frees up the firefighters to do what they're here for, which is to respond to the emergencies. So we don't want to lose this individual. He's responsible for a lot of the facilities and fleet maintenance coordination. He works with, directly hand-in-hand with a lot of our communication systems, dealing with their maintenance and repair. He also works closely with our SCBA, which is our self-contained breathing apparatus, which is a critical piece of equipment. And he does a lot of purchasing research, and he's helping us with grant writing now, too. So his capacity, we're actually expanding on him greatly, and he's doing a great job for us. Hate to see that go. Here's the proposal. It's reduce overtime for minimum on-duty first responder staffing. It's called that because really, the proposal is to reduce the overtimes that we would have to have to replace firefighters who are off-duty for a variety of reasons, whether they're on vacation, holiday time, they're sent out on strike teams, it's backfill. But the reality is, and I'll call a spade a spade, is it works out to basically a station brownout for a maximum savings of $782,861. Some of the impacts, I mean, they're limited to, and I, these are the major things, and I'm not getting exact with them, but of course, it'll extend the response time for our first responders. You have, because you have a decreased distribution of fire stations, you take away that station in the middle of the city. Let me back up a second, but how we would do this would be, as a firefighter calls in sick, the staffing would go down. Say, one firefighter, we would still respond, a medical unit out of the station. If we lost two, if two firefighters were off, we would probably put the extra firefighter on our truck crew. And so we could respond the rescue crew out as, for medicals. And if three, then of course, that's just, the station is closed, and that's it. At two, actually, off, the station would be closed. So getting back to the impacts, extended response times to provide concentrations of firefighters for multiple engines of, engine responses. This is sometimes called the weight of the attack, and it's really critical for firefighters that we, for structure fires, greater alarms, rescues, that we assemble and then quickly to put teams together to do the work. As Chief Sylvie said, Station 3, if that's the station that's chosen, and it looks like it would be the, probably the most desirable station to implement this with, is second due to a lot of stations. So it makes it more difficult for us to assemble firefighters and extends the time that it takes to do that. We would have reduced ability to respond to multiple simultaneous emergencies. That relates to queuing or stacking of alarms. It's not that often that it happens for the fire department, and on the police department, you see that a lot, and they have to prioritize their alarms. But for the fire department, pretty much, although it does happen from time to time, we have an alarm, we deal with it, we return to service quickly, and we handle the next alarm. But when we do have multiple alarms, and I can think of times when, for instance, power's gone out downtown, and we have multiple extracation from elevators, for instance, it would be tougher for us to run, you know, pick those calls up. Next slide. We would see an increased need for use of automatic and mutual aid, and decreased ability to provide the same. We're fortunate, we have a county fire station 15 that's right up at Mission Canyon, so we would anticipate their need to drop into the city to provide coverage for us. But at the same time, we wouldn't be able to send out as many units as we have in the past. So mutual aid is very much a give-and-take type thing, and we would have to look at what we call our drawdown number, in terms of our ability to send out firefighters and to provide mutual aid. We would see decreased ability to provide multi-company training, and to provide special operations units, such as our hazmat use, our teams. A lot of the people at Station, at Station 3, and I'm going, might as well talk about Station 3, they do, they're cross-trained to go out to the airport. And so, the fact that we send them out there, and they're specifically trained, that allows us to move units around, which we do on a daily basis, really, and provide coverage so that we can keep everybody trained to the same level. Also, a lot of the people, those extra people there are trained, have certificates in specialized rescue that we utilize for urban search and rescue teams, and also to expand our hazmat team membership. So this truly gets down to a risk management decision, and looking at what kind of risk factors, how much risk do we want to assume as a policy here in Santa Barbara? I think we made the picture pretty clear that we have a high level of service right now. So, you look at things, and you kind of try and factor in what our current response times and call loads are, and Chief Sylvie's showed you some slides on the workload indicators. You look at the frequency of high-risk events that include fires, explosions, those things that would require those teams of firefighters to work together. And I think Chief Sylvie's had a slide that showed, you know, just specific to fires, that's 4% of our call load. And the bulk of our calls are medical emergencies now. We would, you'd also probably want to compare what our service levels are to like-type cities. And the interesting thing about Santa Barbara, and what the fire chief is probably CL10, he saw years ago, was that this is a unique environment. We have those mountains up on the hills that come right down into our backyards. We have a unique geography, topography here, and that's why this seven-station model was laid out, and it works very well for us, I think. And so, and then you end up, you have to balance your community expectations, values at risk, and best practices, which we talked about, some of those NFPA 17 guidelines, which give us standards or targets to hit as fire departments. They're pretty high standards, I have to admit, that always provide for firefighter safety. Of course, we're, our highest priority is the safety of our community, the public. But right behind that is, and especially for me as a fire chief, is to make sure that our firefighters are safe in doing their job. Here's Station 3. Station 3 responds to about 10% of our department call volume, and they have a good average response time of 3:36. And here I get into those calls, 51% of the calls are medical, 15% are hazardous conditions, we shorten it to HAZCON. And that can be all kinds of things, gas leaks in buildings and such. 29% are false or good intentional-type calls, false alarms. Good intention-type call would be, oh, somebody sees steam, and they think it's smoke coming out of a building. And that's a high number, for some reason. That stands out for me as a fire chief. And then 4% is fire, and that's about consistent, I'd say, with call load for the rest of the city. One thing about Station 3 is it is in the middle of our district, so we can provide coverage from Station 1 to, or, like I said, automatic aid from Santa Barbara County. Although with any outside agency, you cannot depend 100% on what Engine 15's going to be doing. They might be on their own call already. And the other factor to consider is that we really have three units available at Station 1 that can respond out on calls for medical response, and also that American Medical Response, the private ambulance company, is also available to provide response to medicals. That's it for the impacts for the budget reductions options. And now going on to major program issues and P3 highlights. These are some neat things that we're looking forward to for this fiscal year. We're looking forward to the construction, beginning construction of our new administrative building. That's scheduled to begin in November 2010. I'm very excited about that, to get us all back on the same campus together. We already mentioned, we're looking forward to the new aerial ladder truck. Should be placed in service, I believe, in August of this year. The 2010 California Fire Building Code will be reviewed and revised for local adoption, and that's always a good thing, to have up-to-date current codes. And public education program is still being maintained. We've got an excellent partnership with American Red Cross here in Santa Barbara, and we're looking at ways that we can cooperate with the Community Emergency Response Committee for Santa Barbara to continue what we call our CERT training, that Community Emergency Response Training. So, that's ongoing for this year. That's it for the fire department, and I'd just like to say that we, you have a fire department that is extremely dedicated to public safety. We work collaboratively and very well, the fire chiefs, the staff, and of course, the firefighters, towards that end. I believe the firefighters will have a presentation after we're complete. I think that is in line with what we've been saying today, so.
Great, thank you, chief. Questions from the council first, and then we have some public speaking. I'm going to start with a couple of questions. Just to be clear, for those listening, press and so forth, when you're talking about a flat staffing model, you had the number 29 up there in terms of the service, the minimum staffing requirements. That's always been the case. And the difference now is that there are fewer people on, in the department, achieving that flat staffing model. So it's not like we're losing number of firefighters in the stations at all. We're keeping that, that's what you mean by a flat staffing model. So just to be clear, when we're looking at eliminating vacant positions and things like that, we're not eliminating the amount of people at the station at any one time?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. Flat staffing could also be called constant staffing. And that's the level of, we have all our firefighter, all our fire stations staffed fully.
And the reason to do that, as you mentioned, is it's cheaper to pay a staff person overtime than to have additional staff with the benefits associated with the job?
Madam Mayor, that's correct. I believe just about every fire department that I know of now has gone to this. The relief firefighter model, it just costs too much. We find it's a factor, if you pay a firefighter time and a half, to have a firefighter who's an extra firefighter, would cost up to 1.8. So you see those savings by the firefighters working overtime. And they work a lot of overtime.
Yeah. I just want to make that clear for the public, you know, because I think that's an important thing. I have a question, actually, might go to Mr. Armstrong. Couple of years ago, the police department, we put together an ordinance about false, security false alarms, and after a certain number of them in businesses, there was a fee associated with it, that I believe then goes back to the police department. Is there an equivalent type of thing? We can look, I'm looking at the 29% false alarm, good intentions are good intentions. I don't want to stop people from calling 911 if they think something bad's happening. But if it's a series of false alarms at a particular location, is that something that's worth looking into?
I'm not sure if we do it for fire calls, but we can look into it. I mean, I think the number is much lower in fire, just because, I mean, the police department gets just a tremendous, you know, they're probably 90% of the calls, but it's worth looking at it to see if, you know, typically, I think we give them two warnings, and then we charge them.
We do already.
Yeah, that's what we do in police. But remember, with police, what it is, it's the burglar alarms that businesses have, and then the employee at the end of the day is leaving, and they forget to, you know, set the alarm right.
Or they come in, in the morning, and forget to turn it off, and it sets off the alarm, that kind of thing. Well, I just, I was just looking at that 29%, you know, it seems like a big percentage for those kind of calls for service, that if it's a frequent location, that might be something as a deterrent, you know, to save those type of calls. Mr. Poirier, did you want to add?
Madam Mayor, we do have that ability with fire alarms, the mechanical alarms that go off after three alarms. We can also charge $50. They don't go off as frequently as burglar alarms.
But do we do that now?
And of course, it doesn't apply to 911 calls or false calls of that nature. It only applies to the actual alarms. And generally, after the first time or two, they fix them.
Okay.
So it's rarely applied.
Okay, yeah. I don't mean 911 calls, because if people need to call 911, I don't want them to think, oh my God, I might have to get, you know, yeah, no, this is, yeah, okay. Well, all right, well, if it's not an issue, it's not an issue. But I just, it just occurred to me, looking at the message. Okay, questions from, oh my goodness, all the lights are on. Why don't you start, Mr. Hotchkiss, and come on down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure it's fair to ask you this, because it's not in your presentation, but it wasn't a paperwork that we got. And I was just confused when we say hourly employee hours in the fiscal year 2009 was 3,950, and proposed 2011 is 1,409. What are those figures? Can you talk to me about that?
Can you say what page you're on, in the book?
Yeah, it's G140, thank you.
I'm going to toss this one to Ron here, if he has an idea on that. We might have to get back to you, respond back.
Council, Hotchkiss, we do have a few employees hourly that assist in the operations of the fire department. And your question is, why is it reduced?
Yeah, great, why? By half?
From fiscal year 2009 to, like, fiscal year 10 and 11?
It's called, it's staffing somewhere, I just don't understand the numbers. I'm sure they're legitimate, I just would like to know what they're about.
Councilmember Hotchkiss, I believe this is because of mutual aid. We send people out as hourlies to wildland fires, and those numbers went down quite a bit because of a slow fire season.
That's a good thing.
And also, as we mentioned, the business practices have changed a little bit from the Forest Service, so we're adjusting to that model.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, on the fire engine replacements, are we now fully funded for basically putting that fire, getting that new fire engine a year coming in?
We're not fully funded. What we are is, we have created enough cash flow to continue on that trail. But what we didn't do is, when we set this program up, back, for example, on this ladder truck that we're replacing, for the last 15 years, we haven't been setting the money aside. We've only been doing it for about the last five or six. But we created enough cash flow, and then the goal is that even if the equipment's scheduled for replacement at 15 years, they're still going to look at it, and it may go to 16 or 17 years, and they're doing that on every vehicle. And the idea is, over the next 10 to 20 years, by being conservative on the replacement, we'll then start to fully fund it. And so, even though we say 15 years, everyone is still assessed, and that's how we've been able to slowly pick up some balance there. That's why when Councilmember Williams always wants to cut that one, I always say, be careful, because we never were fully funded. because we never were fully funded.
And was that an item that you presented to us tonight, and I didn't see it, that there's money going, being invested in that project?
Chief D'Amico?
No, that was a, that was an option not to be included in the budget this year.
The cut, the $30,000?
Yes.
So, normally, we would be hoping to put, I mean, if it's an engine a year, that's $400,000 a year or something that one would be...
Yeah, what they're doing here, though, is they went to, they went to, or to fleet maintenance, and they said, if we wanted to go out two years...
Four years.
It would be two over 15, and that would be that, what that cost is, whatever that percentage is, 7%.
Fifteen, yes.
So, 7% of what their total cost is, because they're just pushing it out two years. That's why it's only $30,000. What we did last year is, we actually said, let's just not replace a bunch of stuff for a year. And then I think we saved $300,000 or something.
So, this is an area where we are stretching our resources a little thinner? That'd be...
That's correct. And actually, we're playing catch-up from last year, so it's, it's one of those things that you really don't want to get involved in trying to stretch it out. But, but then I always say, the fire chief, I've got to have the guys, you know, a new fire truck with no guys on it, it's not going to help me very much.
That doesn't work very well. But it is still an area of real concern. Red flag alerts or high fire hazard season, is there a department strategy for increasing staffing during that time, or, you talk to us a little bit about that, or not?
Councilmember White, we do look at the, what we call a red flag alert, and we frequently upstaff. One thing that's happening with this is that all the fire chiefs throughout Southern California have agreed on red flag criteria, and we're working with the National Weather Service on this. But we don't have a hard, fast rule, so we push that down to the battalion chief to make that, that decision on a daily basis. But we do upstaff. The problem is, when we upstaff, of course, it's a preventive measure, we don't have any mechanisms to pay for that, so that comes out of our overtime budget.
So, once again, that's the stretching of the, or at least the inability to, to respond to a potential threat. I appreciate that, when a fire hits, then that changes the game completely, and you start calling people on duty and so forth and so on. But there's not, at this point, we don't have a policy of increasing staffing in red flag alerts.
We don't have any hard, fast policy for upstaffing. I know Santa Barbara County is able to do that, and they're, because they're a contract county for CAL FIRE, they actually get funds from the states, state for upstaffing. If I could figure a way to, to generate, you know, to pay for that upstaffing, it would make it a lot easier for me. But I'm very aggressive with, when I'm asked about upstaffing, I always approve it. I'd rather be safe than sorry in those conditions.
Yeah, it does seem like that's the time to have more folks on duty to, to be able to get on those little fires before they get to be a big fire into those terrible conditions.
Typically, when we upstaff, we'll provide at least one patrol, which is just, it's a pickup truck with a pump on it, with two for monitoring, and upstaff to another engine, so Station Seven would have two engines available out of it. And also, another thing to remember is that Station Seven, also, there's a Forest Service engine, Engine 46.
Yeah, that's right. Well, thank you. And then last is, and this, it really goes to my learning curve on the whole budget review. I noticed that, that the salary and benefits are lumped into a single piece of each pie, and of course, it's, it's the biggest piece of each pie. And I would appreciate seeing what, and the benefits then would be broken down into probably two or three categories of what, what are the benefits. I would appreciate learning or seeing that, and I, to be truthful, that's probably one of the single most prevalent questions that I get asked about by citizens is, what is the benefit system? What is the retirement system? And so, I think that it would be useful, perhaps for others as well, to have that clarified during budget time. And then, obviously, is, in this one, it's also lumped together, salaries and benefits together. So, I'd appreciate some more education on that along the way.
And we can provide you kind of maybe a line item detail for salary and benefits in fire, and that'll give you a good feel for it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Along the things that Councilmember White was asking about is, sort of, every bit of revenue that we find is less stretching thin that we have to do. And so, my question is pretty much just along the lines of, really, are we, are we calculating the ARF reimbursement correctly? I mean, you know, the, you, simple math, and I've asked this question before, you know, what's one fire station cost us? And they go, well, our total budget, general fund, you know, divided by eight, that's what one fire station costs. But when I divide our general fund budget by eight, it's $2,670,000, which is a big difference between that and the ARF reimbursement. So, you know, I wanted to understand the methodology for the ARF reimbursement, and whether we are really factoring in administration, training, what is factored out of ARF? Why isn't that $900,000 more? Of course, hopefully Karen Ramsdale isn't cringing at, at the television right now, but...
Good question. I do know, we do wrap a lot of administrative costs into the ARF, and if you look, you'll see fractions of positions that are in there. And we actually pay for part of our lead captains, those are our scheduling captains, because they do a lot of administrative work. Part of our battalion chief time is actually paid through by the airport, the ARF funds.
But is it one-eighth of three battalion chiefs?
So, it could be audited and looked at again, and that would be a discussion I could have with Karen and look at this. I know we have increased it to get a greater percentage. A couple of things to take into consideration. One, you have to take out all of prevention, so you've got to back that out. So, that's well over a million dollars. Also, remember, you really have, you almost have to look at it as nine stations, because Station One with the ladder truck has basically four employees on that truck, as well as the three who are on the engine company. But I, I believe the last time we looked at it, a couple of years ago, we had a percentage of the bat chief on duty, we had a percentage of the ops chief, we had a percentage of the chief, we had a percentage of the clerical, and we even also then picked up part of the, like, finance overtime for payroll and stuff like that. At that time, I felt like it was a pretty aggressive model.
I'd love to see the details, but I won't take the council's time.
We can, we can provide that for you, the full report on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. House?
Well, just on that subject, is the, are the cross-training aspect of Station Three personnel included in that? They're cross-trained to, to work at the airport and augment that service? Is that what I was understanding from your presentation?
The airport pays for the training. We have a certain number of people that, that they actually assist us with in costing the training, the specific...
I see, but then on any, oh, I see. So, then if there were a response of, other than Station Eight's personnel, would that then be billed to the airport, like a mutual aid kind of arrangement?
No, that would just be a service that we provide as we go out, out to the airport.
Okay. We're looking for every penny.
Yeah.
So, the P3 list of, it was right, one of your last slides, construction of the new administration building, the new aerial ladder truck, and the California Fire and Building Code to be reviewed and revised. I'm trying to look there and see, the funding for those things, are, is any of that funding even available for operation, operations, or for anything besides the capital aspect of those projects? In other words, those, those projects, are, that's dedicated capital funding that can't be used for other general fund, can't be displaced? Or can it?
I, I believe it's pretty well wrapped in. They're all capital projects. The, the RDA funding for the station, I mean...
I mean, let's just say, we got a question from the public. Why are you doing a new administration building when we are so desperately in need of all these other things? How would we answer that?
Well, I'd defer that to the city administrator, but...
No, I just, you know, the public has that concept.
Well, a simple answer right now is, you're paying $240,000 a year for rental space, and, and it's all funded by the redevelopment agency.
And so, and of course, the ladder, we just talked about the ladder truck and all that. Okay. Just, again, we get, we get a lot of questions like that, and I want to be prepared. Let's look at the, the $908,000 that's on that list of other options, not proposed in the budget. So, I think maybe that's one just thing to say out loud again and again. It's not, you're not recommending those things. You would, you really would rather not go there with these things that are on that list.
That is correct. As a fire chief, the last thing I want to, I want to recommend is the closure, even part-time of a fire station. So, I'm, I'm hoping that whatever can be done is done, so we can keep that station open.
Thank you. And then, with regards to the, I think I've got my answer here, that with regards to the hook and ladder truck, that's a four-person crew in this proposed budget, or three?
That's a four-person, no reduction in stacking on the ladder truck.
No reduction, that stays status quo. And then, out of the same, okay, and out of the same facility, there's also a three-person engine company?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco, you don't have any questions? Okay, Ms. Self?
Um, by running so...
Put on your mic. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. By running so lean without the reserve officers, this puts you at greater risk of having to brown out a station. Is that correct? By having only three reserve officers?
No, not entirely, because what happens is, the firefighters work overtime to do the backfill.
Okay.
So, they just fill in for each other.
So, if we, if your budget got so lean that you didn't have the overhead, that would be what risked the browning out of this station?
It would have to go to actually a station closure, where we would decide, we're going to close one station, and that's shutter the doors, and then attrition or lay off nine firefighters to that, to that level, which would be, provide savings of about $1.4 million.
Talk about emails from the community.
But we're not even suggesting that.
No.
Just to be clear.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to put that out there.
When you replace this new ladder truck, is there a market for the other ladder truck that we're displacing, and is that a general fund asset or a capital fund?
You know, Public Works Fleet Maintenance follows up with that, but I do know that they usually go to a fleet auctioneer, and I myself have driven old ladder trucks down to Los Angeles where they get, they get sold as surplus, and volunteer fire departments still use them, and they're well-maintained.
The income from the sale of such a vehicle, is that general fund, or does that go back into the capital fund?
The way that Public Works does it is, they make a gross assumption that they will get a 10% residual value when they replace equipment. And then, and then, so when they figure out what they're going to charge the fire department, they back that out. And then, when they sell it, and they do sell it at auction or at bid, and they take that, whatever money they receive, and it goes back into the fleet replacement fund.
Thank you. Okay. We have a couple of presentations, or speakers. I want to bring Fire and Police Commissioner Tom Parker up. Thanks for being here. I'll put a couple, two minutes on, and then we have a presentation from our firefighters' association.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, I am a member of the Fire and Police Commission, but I'm really here tonight speaking as a private citizen, as a resident of Santa Barbara, and also as someone who spent 30 years in law enforcement, both as a police officer and almost 25 years in the FBI. One of the positions I held in the Bureau was running the, managing the budget and staffing levels for the FBI field offices across the country with regard to the criminal investigative programs. And over the years, and especially in my time in that position, we frequently faced rather severe budget constraints, cuts, and additional jurisdictions being assigned to us sometimes with no budget to, to fund them. And it forced us into a series of assessments that we had never really done before, which was looking at, first of all, what did the citizens want? What could we offer best, even in light of these constraints? What traditionally did our constituents really expect from the FBI? And it took a lot of prioritization planning as a result of those assessments. We learned some, some interesting lessons. We sadly learned that when we cut program-level budgets and staffing levels, we frequently created problems which were difficult to reverse, and even more frequently, we fell victim to the law of unanticipated consequences. When we decreased manpower in certain programs, it created a vacuum within those programs, and we lost the confidence of the American people, we started to lose jurisdiction, we started to face even more budget cuts because of pulling back from, from those areas. And the public got the perception that we no longer cared about some of the, the major federal crimes that we did have to, have to pull back from. So, tonight, I would, I would like to urge you to not make cuts in public safety, to make sure that it is our number-one priority as a city government. And we can't really just mandate 5% or 10% cuts across the board and have them also impact public safety. We need to find out what the people really want. We need to know that people, we need, we know that people want to feel safe in their homes and in their communities, and if they don't, nothing else really matters. All the other services tend to, to really take on less importance. I worry a lot in, in my position on the commission and coming from public safety, that we're knocking at the door of some real problems as we continue looking at these cuts in, in public safety. In most communities around the country where I've lived and served, public safety is the number-one priority. When budget cuts are necessary or were necessary, the police departments, the fire departments, were usually the last to be considered for cuts, as it should be. So, tonight, I urge you to look deeply and seriously into not making any more reductions in the public safety budgets. We're already at bare bones for a city our size. We can't afford it as a community, and I'm not sure that the citizens will continue to tolerate continued cuts in, in both the budget and resources. Public safety needs to be the number-one priority, and it needs to be reflected. The message needs to be sent to the citizens that it is our number-one priority, and the budget needs to reflect same. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have a presentation. Normally, I would ask for 10 people to be here for 20 minutes, but considering you, many of your staff, coworkers volunteered your time today at TT's funeral, I'll make sure that, that's fine. So, you have a presentation, you want to put up your laptop, and you have 20 minutes which shows on the...
Google, try to, try to speed it up.
That's all right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
You're going to need to go, turn on your mic? There you go. And I'll let you know when you're down to, if you can't see the time, I'll let you know as we go down how much time you have left.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm John Turner, Vice President of the Santa Barbara City Firefighters Association. I'm joined tonight by Mike Hous, fire captain, an association member, and also firefighter Jeremy Denton, who's the president of the Firefighters Association. I know it's been a long day. I know it's been a long budget cycle already, and we've still got more to go. The reason that we're here tonight is to talk about the operational impacts, in the view of the Firefighters Association, for the station closure and the station brownout. We all know that this was part of last year's proposed alternate strategies to meet the budget. It didn't happen, and then during the mid-cycle adjustments, this was brought back in February with a possible implementation date of March. We came to you in February and asked you, basically, to not brown out, and at the same time, we also contracted the GIS service to produce us some maps so that we could go through and see, you know, not just on a assumption basis, but on a fact-based basis, what the impacts are of closing a fire station. Are we, you guys are all in trouble if I have to wing this whole thing.
I'll stop it for a minute so you can get your technical, is it up?
I'm not sure.
It was.
It was briefly.
Try that, try the... Try that, try the connection again.
So basically, we're going to talk about the, the exact map packets that we gave you back in February. We've actually gone through and paid the contractor for some more refined information. The refined maps have little difference, to the point that we're just going to use the exact maps that we gave you back in February. We'd also like to expand a little bit on the impacts to emergency medical services, and the impacts that we see to fire safety, and basically, you know, when we increase response times for structured fires. I was just, looks like I have half a screen, half a screen, half a screen's better than no screen.
I'll stop the clock, so you can, do you want to try fixing that?
I will comment that we can cook.
You do, you can cook? You can cook?
Mike probably is the most accomplished on the job. Okay.
Okay.
Moving computers. Okay, that works. Okay.
Put, put your mic on. The mic, okay.
Thank you. This one off? I'll, I'll figure it out sooner or later. Okay. So, got a couple pictures of the, of the T-fire here while we were, while we were opening. If you have any questions on the maps, please feel free to stop us. Got questions at the end. We're trying, you know, burn through this as quick as we take, as quick as we can, and hopefully get underneath the 20 minutes and not get cut off. So, like I said, we, the Firefighters Association used the raw data from the fire department and from the dispatch information. We hired a contractor to put that information onto a map to show us what removing a station does. Those are those maps that you received. Okay? So, like I said, repetition here, and the data's from either the city GIS data or from the county assessors, and the Firefighters Association is obviously concerned with any reduction to staffing and response capability. So, without further ado, we're going to go into the maps.
Hi, I'm Michael Hous. I'm a fire captain up at Station 7. Oh.
You're also, you can go up to the podium here if you want.
Did I press anything? Don't hit any F-buns. And like John says, I'm a fire captain up at Station 7. It's, serves with the bookends of the T and H A C C E D A fire. What we're looking at here is the seven-station model, similar to what the fire chief had put up there, and each color represents the, oh, thank you very much. That's great technology. Each represents the, the, the station that it serves, and as Chief Silvius was saying, we do have great character, we have great architecture, great people and great flair, and the city, of course, is known for that. Go ahead, John. And when we look at area coverage, we're going to look at Station 3, which is right here, and that green area represents distribution. Distribution means four minutes travel. Four minutes travel is important because of medical emergencies, for which we've seen they respond to quite a few. Now, conversely, the orange color talks about concentration. As Chief Dimizio said, there's weight, getting sufficient resources, enough of them, and then there's speed, getting them quickly. So the green footprint there is Station 3's ability to travel in four minutes. Next. Now, if you look at Station 1, Station 3's still in place, but the Riviera is not well-covered at all by Station 1. Station 1 does a great job of covering their district. Next, please. Station 2, same thing. They do a very good job of covering the majority of their district and the commercial properties that exist there, but they don't cover 3's district. Next, please. Station 4 doesn't touch any of 3's district at all. Next, please. And Station 7, and you can see through here, this represents, of course, the current districts. So as you can see, between all those different stations, only Station 3 covers Station 3. Next, please. When we broke down to try and see, you know, basically the demographics, we talk about the city and all the great people that are there, we see that our stations roughly protect the same number of people, based upon this breakout here of residential parcels. Next. And again, we talk about the flair and the character and the history of Santa Barbara. In fact, the History Channel did a story on Santa Barbara and talked about where is, you know, the, the seat of Santa Barbara, so to speak, and they looked at that east-side area where Garden Street came up. And if you look at this here, you see there's 258 designated or potential designated historical sites, including Fire Station 3. Next, please. Commercial properties, not only a residential and commercial property coverage here in this downtown corridor that, between Station 1 and Station 3, they cover. Go ahead, please. But assessed value, $3 billion in this district right here, $3 billion. Go ahead, please. When we looked at our incidents, we used as CAD, and Chief Dimizio was gracious in supporting and providing all this information, as well as the GIS. But our numbers here for 2009 show roughly 866 incidents occurred in 3's district. Doesn't necessarily mean that 3 ran every one of those calls, it means within that boundary, there were 866 calls for service. Next. The wildland urban interface, near and dear to our hearts for a number of reasons, but this area right in here, within 3's district, is in the high-fire hazard area, and in the 2004 plan, the, the wildland fire plan calls for, to have an engine within four minutes to that area. That 319 acres, go ahead, please, represents almost 940 homes, and about $1 billion worth of assessed value. Go ahead, please. Distribution and concentration, coming back to that again, speed and weight. If you look at all the green that's outlined here, that's where with our seven-station model, we can get in four minutes. And eight minutes is the orange. Go ahead. Significant, when you pull Station 3 out, these are the impacts, 3's in and 3's out. These are huge impacts right here. That's about 150 acres of property, 700 homes, $800 million worth of property, just in that four-minute response, that change that occurs right there. So when Chief Dimizio talks about impacts, take a look, here's the impacts. These are the areas that service level will change, and change dramatically. And seconds count. We talk about four minutes, and we talk about it for medical emergencies. But the other thing that we talked about, that Chief Dimizio also mentioned that we talked about, is eight minutes. And why eight minutes? Why are we talking about distribution and concentration? Well, concentration is the ability, based on NFPA 1710, to get to that call with sufficient forces. They say 13, we show up with 14, in eight minutes, and that's because of flashover. And John's going to talk a little bit more about that. Next, please. When we have a first-alarm response, you get three engines, a truck, and a battalion chief, 14 firefighters. And as you can see, and, and the legend over here, as we break down, the darker green colors are those areas with our seven-station model, that we can get more engines quicker. As we move out into these ladder colors here, we look at the white, no concentration, i.e. we don't get there in time with this seven-station model. And it's on the fringes up here, the fringes up high of sevens, and on that far east end of twos. Go ahead, please. When you remove it, take a look, sorry. Take a look at the changes that occur. Can you go back, John? So here we have this very strong area in here, and when we pull this out, notice up in here, how we've made some changes up in Hidden Valley, the sixes district up in here, this area in this lower east side as well. Next side, please. Now, we still run, and by our count, 8,500 calls. The chief's count through probably Firehouse, 7,500 calls. We're still running those calls regardless of how many stations we have. But if you remove Station 3, and one other engine, in this case, Engine 1 goes on a call, this is what happens. You no longer have concentration in any of these areas here at all. The ability to get there within eight minutes is, does not exist. Go ahead. An assumption of what a six-station district would look like, go ahead. And you can see how we've doubled residents in many of these areas here, so that the population base, whereas we had firefighters covering, say, 11,000, now we're up to 25,000. Go ahead. Historic sites as well, and assessed value. So we're, we're really dramatically changing those numbers. Go ahead, please. I'm going to turn over now to Jeremy here, he's going to talk a little bit about on the EMS side of things.
Boys and toys. Probably smarter than a toy. Ah. So we keep bringing up this four-minute response, and the four-minute, you want to think of the chain of survival, this, this bottom chain of survival's going to be in the same place in the next few slides, because it's extremely important. You have the early access to 911, early CPR, which could be a bystander, or it could be waiting for emergency services to show up, and then you have the early defibrillation, which would be us, and then advanced care, which would be AMR. So we strive to meet the four-minute response, because zero to four minutes, if you're down, you're not likely to have brain damage. It's that simple. That's why we want to meet that four. As you go over 4%, or, I'm sorry, four minutes, four to six minutes, brain damage possible, six to 10 minutes, brain damage very likely, that's stuff we don't want to hear or talk about. So that's why that four minutes is so important. So the time, when you talk about your, your chain of survival, time begins with the receipt of the call, 911, bam, the, the clock starts ticking. And then it ends when we get on scene, and, go ahead, back to the, and hopefully, we have that four-minute response. So within four minutes, we get the, the dispatch gets the call, we get dispatched, and we're there. And that's why it's so extremely important to be close. Go ahead. So why, why four minutes? I've kind of already talked about that, the American Heart Association, and if a heart attack, every minute that goes by decreases the chances of survival by 10%. So it gets worse and worse as it, as response gets slower and slower. After four to six minutes, once again, the capability for responders to successfully resuscitate diminishes rapidly, and few patients benefit from defib, the defibrillators, if CPR is not performed within the two or three minutes. So if there isn't a bystander, we have to, you know, beat the clock even, even faster to get there in time to make defibrillation more successful.
You're down to seven minutes, just so you know, speaking of minutes.
Okay, thank you. See, it's important when you're talking here, too. Uh, next, oh, yeah. So that's why it's such a good thing that we meet the four-minute response time to 90, 90% of the time. Then the link between early access, I kind of already went over this, via, and then I think this is probably the last slide, and then I'll push it off to...
Got a couple more.
Chain of survival is, illustrates the point at all players, so, you know, early CPR, early defib. It's a little dramatic, but it's talking about the link of the four minutes, the longer it takes us to get there, and ALS to get there, the more likely it is that we're not going to be successful.
Excuse me. Typically, AMS gets there how fast?
AMR. AMR gets there after us. It ranges, because they, they could be right behind us, or they could be quite a few minutes behind us, depending on, they have less coverage than we do.
Councilmember Och, because we don't have access to their response data.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're going to jump back into why the four minutes is critical for structured fires. We actually have a video on, on flashover, but if we're down to seven minutes, we're probably just going to try to get through this.
Down to 5:45.
Down to 5:45. Okay, so obviously, you know, the mission and the goal of the fire department is to save lives and property. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that if it takes you longer to get to a call, we're going to have less chance of rescue for people that are in fires, and we're going to experience greater property damage due to fire. A couple, you know, recent fires that we've had, that we've had good stops on, due to the concentration of firefighters, we currently have are the fires on De Lavina Street, and a fire in the, in the courthouse. This right here is a picture of a flashover. This was in January on the 1,000 block of De Lavina Street. What a flashover is, is that's, that's when every combustible material in a room reaches its ignition temperature at the same time. So basically, you know, a fire will start, you know, and it will, it will, the heat will, you know, begin to travel up to the ceiling, they'll spread out, and eventually, that heat will get down to the floor level. When it gets hot enough, everything in the room will burst into flames at the same time. You see up there on the eaves, it looks like a very liquid flames. Moments before this picture was taken, that would have been thick, dark, black smoke, and it got hot enough that those unburnt combustibles actually lit. Our goal in a P3 objective of the department is to contain 90% of the fires to their room of origin. Once flashover occurs, the likelihood of containing it to the room of origin and/or keeping it from extending in the structure, into the rest of the structure, is, is difficult at best, to say nothing about survivability. That, right there, is not survivable. Now, this fire wasn't, it was contained to the, to the first, or to the room of origin, and there was minimal damage to the, to the other, to the other apartments. However, the, the building is still standing and with, you know, cosmetic and minor reconstruction, I, I don't know if it's back into, you know, rental status yet, but it, you know, the building's still there. Another high-profile one, obviously, was the court building, having the amount of resources available to get there quickly. The fire was found quickly, you know, there was a little bit of, you know, initially, that fire wasn't obvious to where it was, and they actually called in additional resources to go seek where the seat of that fire was. Obviously, the courthouse is a, you know, historic and very important building to us all. Okay, we're going to skip over the flashover for the most part. It's actually a, oop, maybe it's not even loaded, so maybe you won't even get the video. All right, let's see here. Hang on, more technical difficulty. Sorry, I'm a firefighter, not a computer.
Hey, stop the clock.
Am I, am I, okay.
Having difficulties.
There you go. Yeah. Two minutes, 45 seconds.
Okay. So, we'll jump right into, you know, what we see as the operational impacts. Obviously, there's safety concerns, you know, like, like the chief said, you know, our primary focus is on the, is on the citizens, but we also have to worry about firefighter safety as well. One of the things that we have to do on any fire where we encounter a situation where we go into anything that's immediately dangerous to life and health, if we put two, three, or four firefighters in, we're mandated to have a contingency two-person rescue crew waiting outside. Being that Engine 3 is on every first-alarm fire in the city, with the exception of the Mesa, basically, that engine, that third engine for our structured fire response, is going to be coming from farther away, which is going to take longer time to either make entry into that house, or to establish that, that safety crew for us. Like we said earlier, beating a dead horse, you know, it increases the risk of unsuccessful rescues, and you see greater property damage. Firefighting is a, you know, it's an, it's a, it's a skill, and it's a task that requires many operational duties to be done simultaneously. Right here, you've got, you know, you only see three or four guys in the picture, you also have people on the roof, probably cutting a hole right now, you've got people going to cut utilities, you've got fire engineers working at the pump, and other personnel trying to acquire water for that first-in fire engine. Skip that, too. So, in summary, you know, closing Station 3, it has, it has large impacts. You know, right now, if we're reaching, you know, the, the five-minute goal, 88% of the time, you know, removing one station is probably not going to affect the averages throughout the city that often, being that it's, you know, a little more than 10% of the engines, and it takes about 10% of the calls. With removing that station, we're less worried about what the averages overall are going to be compared to what's going to happen in that specific district where we remove that fire engine. You know, like I said, we mentioned our, our safety factors, that concentration of firefighters is very important to us. The reasons are, are long. We know that, you know, the budget issues, you know, are, are real. One of the questions is, is it worth the money saved, worth the risk to the firefighters, worth the risk to the community? worth the risk to the community? One of the things that we ask you constantly is, hey, you know, we want you to prioritize public safety, prioritize public safety. One of the things that you guys should be guaranteed in prioritizing public safety is that we're running efficiently. You know, the chief talked about getting to that flat staffing level. We're at 94 in this bargaining unit right now. Getting down to a flat staffing level and keeping two of those proposed positions either vacant or eliminated will actually have us down to 88 or possibly 87 by this time next year. So your firefighters today are doing more, offering more services, going to more calls, going to more population, doing it with less people. One of the things that we believe would help greatly is getting a new, investing in an updated master fire plan, one hasn't been done since 1985, and also standards of coverage. An updated master fire plan and standards of coverage will give you all the confidence that we've got, what we need to protect this city right now, and we can't afford to take any less.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work that you do every day.
And thank you for allowing us to, our 20 minutes.
And I'm pleased that the brownout option is not in the budget, so we have to bridge that $2.6 million gap in order to make sure it stays that way. That's in terms of where it is. It's back to the council. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of questions for Mr. Turner. That fire on De La Vina with the flashover, that was the hash oil factory, correct? What was the, who responded to it, and what were the response times?
You need to come to a mic, either there or there, fine.
I'm sorry. My phone one day.
That's all right.
The, our standard structured fire response is three engines, the ladder truck, and a battalion chief. And that's what that fire was dispatched. The, I don't, there was not an additional alarm fire, so they did not call for additional resources with the exception of the hazmat vehicle, which also fills our air bottles. So they call for that vehicle to be brought in and fill our air bottles, and then it goes away. The response times, it's right around the street from Station One. You know, it's almost like driving three blocks because of the one-way streets right there, but the response time was, you know, from notification was pretty low. I believe it's less than two minutes, but that's, you know, that's going to be a guess. You know, one of the, you know, obviously, in the middle of the night, detection of fires without smoke detectors, you know, is, you know, if the residents aren't awakened by it, then you're, you know, have to rely on passerby's, you know, driving down De La Vina, our neighbors waking up to the noise. And I believe it was called in by a neighbor before it was called in by anybody at that actual residence, but I don't have the exact facts.
So were there smoke alarms?
I don't remember whether or not there were. I came in on the third-in engine.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
Well, I just wanted to...
I'm sorry, was there other information?
Actually, I can answer the...
Mr. Poirier, thank you.
Question on smoke alarms, Madam Mayor. There were smoke alarms, and they did go off.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
I just wanted to thank you guys for their presentation. I think it underscores the need for us to maintain a certain level of staffing, to maintain a certain level of service. And I think that's really why we have to be very careful about our revenues and our expenses this year. We absolutely need to save Station Three. And I think it's this, my sense of this council's will, that it is to save Station Three into the future. But we are going to have to keep on doing the work to make sure it stays that way. And I really appreciate the fact that you guys are still at the table and also still talking about solutions. And you guys have always been very constructive in the way that you bring these presentations to be actually backing up your claims with real data about how to protect public safety. So I want to appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I thank you for your presentation. I'm going to sound like a broken record to those at this council and mayor. I have always said not all employees have the equal weight, and that we, as a city, need to, I'm going to just echo what Mr. Parker has said, is that I think public safety is the number-one priority, and that is probably the reasons most early cities were formed, was to provide this very valuable task. And I am one of those who is in firm belief of that and want to see you have the resources necessary to keep this city safe. I think it is, you know, I can have a long laundry list of things that are not as important as public safety. And thank you for your service and presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Self. And we said it last year and we'll say it again, is, you know, as firefighters, we don't expect to be treated differently as employees. We're not different, we're not higher, but public safety is, and we appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Mr. House.
Very good. I appreciate both the presentations tonight. I mean, and one of the things that I wanted to acknowledge was, and appreciate, was management's willingness to share the data with the folks putting on this, I mean, with the association and with the folks that are really trying hard to tell us what it's like for them as the folks on the front line, actually doing the work of it. And I didn't hear any great differences in these presentations. It wasn't like there was an adversarial tone on one hand, and I also didn't hear any great, I mean, maybe there's some small variations in ways you look at things or something, but it seems like the message is unified and very clear about the need for the kind of coverage that we've managed to have for many, many years. The one thing that seems to be different that's going to affect everybody is this idea of the constant staffing or the steady level of staffing as opposed to having the maybe more abundant resources that we've had in the past, personnel resources, to fill in where necessary. So this is a kind of an important question I have, but I don't know whether, right now, you can give me the answer. But if we get to the point where we really are relying on a flat staffing model of 29, what does that do for our resilience? What's the impact? I mean, do we have an ability with our, with that level of staffing to be able to fill a gap in if we need it? Somebody gets sick or injured or whatever that happens there, using overtime? Does the public experience a diminishment of level of service using that model? And recognizing, I think, also that this is, hopefully, we're not going to be at this level forever. I mean, right, we're trying to ride out a very difficult financial situation, economic situation. But talk to me a little bit about that, and from the perspective, I'd like to hear from both of you, actually.
Why don't we start with the chief?
Well, the flat staffing or constant staffing is probably a model that we're going to work towards, and that'll be our fire department.
So that model would be something that, once it's established, would be continuing into the future, no matter what?
That's correct, and that's what we're working towards. Now, we closely, what happens is we have, when we send out additional engine companies and we start running down, we have fewer people in the city to work. So what can happen is we have to mandate firefighters to work. That means they don't voluntarily want to work, and we say, I'm sorry, but to maintain this constant staffing, you're going to have to work today. But that's something that all the firefighters know, that's part of the deal. And it's just the way fire departments do staffing now. But it's something that we closely look at, we manage, we're in discussions with labor group to deal with this. In fact, Jeremy and I have been talking about changing some of our policies as we move towards this constant staffing, lower overall level of manpower for the fire department. So it's something that we keep an eye on, but it's really the way the fire department's probably going to be. I can't see any change.
And before I just hear from John or whomever over on this side here, I just, then, if we were looking forward two or three or four years out, and we were having the opportunity to put things back somehow, are you clear already, do you have an idea of what you would replace as things were to get better economically? Or, I mean, would we stay at the, really, the level that we're establishing now?
Honestly, I'd look at some of the support administrative positions, that training captain position, I'd love to have a person back there. Some of the things that we need to facilitate moving the department ahead, planning positions, I would really like to have people in those roles. I feel very comfortable, we have a very strong fire department with the seven-station model, with the truck crew at full staff. But to provide also in terms of prevention, I think we're running pretty lean there. So I'd see more support people rather than full.
Support, prevention, that kind of training?
Exactly.
Key, big three, right there?
Exactly. I'd start looking at those places first. And then actually, if we went, if we decided to upstaff, that would actually be another thing we would have to talk to the Firefighters Association about because that affects their overall paycheck. Because that overtime gets distributed amongst all the membership, and if there's less overtime, then there's less, you know, for each individual. So that would be something, if we went that way, we would also have to discuss.
Okay, got it. So from your perspective, the status, this constant staffing or this flat staffing, at the numbers that we're talking about, provides a level of service that continues a level of service that our community has come to expect. And there's ways to enrich it and make it better in the future in terms of prevention and training and all, and support. And that would be something we'd recover if things got, when things get better.
That's correct. And it's also incumbent upon us, when people retire or for whatever reasons move on, to bring on new firefighters more quickly.
Oh, that's right.
Because our academy process can be 12 weeks. And if we go down, if, say, we have 10 people retire all at once, that's really going to affect our staffing level, thus the amount of times that the guys have to work overtimes and get mandated. So there's a lot of sides to the equation in staffing fire departments.
And Mr. Turner, or Mr. Who's, what?
I agree.
Along with that?
I agree completely with the chief. There's a lot of different dynamics that come into play. Very few departments, none that I can actually think of offhand, although I know there are some, are running in an overstaffed model. The only way I would see it going back the other way was if benefits started to, the cost of benefits dropped below what the cost of an overtime was, and make economic sense to overhire then and have more warm bodies than you did positions. You know, the bottom line for us is that 29 number, you know, keeping all the fire stations staffed at their full level. That's not to say that losing their reliefs doesn't have any impacts at all. Right now, having those extra positions allows us on a T or has a C to fire to staff two additional engines. It allows us to send additional resources out of town when, you know, other communities call, although it's just not real standard practice anymore to have above and beyond your slotted positions. You know, I think the most, you know, critical position right now in our eyes, if something could come back first, is, you know, like the chief said, is the training captain position. The training chief is a busy man, does a lot of administrative assignments, and, you know, our job, you know, to get on my soapbox a little, you know, you guys pay me to be trained to respond to whatever somebody calls 911 for. And, you know, training is our most important function that we do on a day-in and day-out basis. And so getting somebody back on the floor that can help us facilitate that training is important.
Thanks again, and thanks very much for the collaborative spirit that I'm hearing here.
Mr. Hachkis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, did I hear you say that overtime doesn't go to the individual firefighter, it goes into a pool?
No, the overtime goes to the firefighter.
Yeah, I was thinking, whoa, wait a minute here.
It's a, just, if you looked at overtime as a large lump sum, it would, you know, be distributed to the firefighters that are working those hours.
Okay, good, thank you. And I'd obviously also like to thank all of you for everything you've done in the presentations tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So this concludes all the department presentations. Oh, okay. And we now will have in June, Mr. Armstrong, do you want to give an update about where we are with the budget process?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. As you know, we're still negotiating with most of our labor associations, including the Firefighters Association, to try and not only cover that $2.6 million gap that we still have to cover, but I think the council also would like to restore some services. So that's a critical part of what we're doing, and I think the discussions with the Firefighters Association have been productive, and I hope they continue to be productive. We are not planning to have the first budget workshop on June the 3rd, but instead, we do have a closed session scheduled that day. But we are planning the two, and I believe they're like the 14th.
14th and the 16th, I believe.
And the 16th. And that gives us more time in the next couple of weeks to hopefully reach some substantive agreements with our labor association so you can have a better feel for your, you know, what those labor concessions total, does it get us to the 2.6? And like I said, our goal is to actually come back and restore some services beyond that, or I think the council's goal is to do that. And hopefully by the 14th, we'll have some good news on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, that concludes tonight's budget hearing. Thank you very much for all your work.